We'll go ahead and get started then. I will go ahead and call the April 1st, 2024 City Council to order at 6:02 PM. And please go ahead and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. All right. Thanks, everybody. Let's see here. We have a relatively limited agenda, not a whole lot on it today. And so we do not have any minutes for approval this evening. And so item number three is announcing changes to the committee meeting agendas and committee membership approvals. Ms. Trimble, do we have any changes to the posted committee schedule for April 3rd?
Not that I'm aware of. And can we confirm that all members are here?
My goodness, I did that in my head. Yes, thank you. All members are present. Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble. And online, we have Counselor Vasika, Counselor Anderson, and Counselor Savage. Other than that, we have everybody in attendance this evening. Thank you so much. Okay. Seeing no changes to the committee schedule for April 3rd, then that will stand as published online. So that brings us to item number four, which is Special Presentations and Proclamations. We don't have any scheduled this evening, just making sure we have nobody from a neighborhood council leadership team that is here to present this evening. We weren't notified of anybody. I do have an announcement here at the beginning of the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the City Council, I have an exciting announcement to make. Over the past few months, I've been partnering with Chief Collier and the Police Department to bring a unique event to our city, a city-sponsored naked bike ride. Our bicycle patrol officers are thrilled to lead the parade, and we are even offering the use of seized bicycles for residents who don't have a bike to join the fun, condemned bicycles. April Fools! I couldn't resist adding a bit of humor to our meeting today. While a naked bike ride may not be on the agenda, I assure you that we are dedicated to promoting safe and enjoyable events for all residents. Thank you for indulging me a little bit. Thanks, everybody. And for those that may not know, this was a thing in our history here in Missoula. So just had to take advantage of April 1st, and thanks so much for having a little fun. Appreciate that. All right. That covers Agenda Item Number Four. As I mentioned, on our agenda this evening, we have one public hearing, and we do not have any posted new business or any regular business on the agenda as of yet. So with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, again, which is Public Hearings. State law and City Council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the City Council and the Mayor invite community comment. City Council holds a public hearing, and will vote this evening unless there is a need or requirement to vote the following week. So our first item this evening is Item 5.1. It's an ordinance rezoning 2361 and 2359 West Kent Avenue. And we have Charlie Ream here to provide the staff presentation. So Charlie, when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Charlie Ream. My pronouns are they/them, and I am an associate planner in the current planning division. Development Services has received a request from Tamara Ross of IMAG Corp. representing Craig Best to rezone a property addressed as 2361 and 2359 West Kent Avenue. The property is proposed to be rezoned from RT 5.4 residential two-unit townhouse to RM 135 residential multi-dwelling. This rezoning will result in a standard district under Title 20 which cannot be conditioned. Standard zoning districts must apply the same requirements to all parcels within the same zoning district equally. And the current planning division has received 12 protest petitions, which is more than 25% of adjacent property owners, and a 2/3 vote will be required to approve the rezone request. The subject property is located at 2361 and 2359 West Kent Avenue, three blocks north of South Avenue and two blocks east of Reserve Street and the Franklin to the Fort Neighborhood and City Council Ward 5. It is northwest of the mall and Rail Link Dog Park. The Bitterroot Trail is located less than 2/10 of a mile to the east of the property and can be accessed by going eastward on the sidewalks along West Sussex Avenue. Here is a closer view of the parcels outlined in red. Combined, the properties are 14,375 square feet in area and contain three existing structures. The structures are two detached houses and a shared garage. The area surrounding the property contains detached residences on four sides. The applicable regional plan is the R-Missoula 2035 Growth Policy, which recommends a land use designation of residential high density or greater than 24 dwelling units per acre. This designation is identified for areas within the core of the community and where city services and infrastructure are readily available. Structures may be a range of dwelling types, from small lot, single dwelling, large-scale multi-story, or multi-dwelling development. The City Growth Policy indicates that the following districts are most closely aligned with the residential high-density designation, RM 135, RM 145, RM 1, and RM 0.5. All four zoning districts are residential districts that permit all residential building types, including multi-dwelling. These four zoning districts permit some civic and commercial uses such as daycares, schools, religious assembly, and community gardens. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RT 5.4 to RM 135. The RM 135 zoning district is consistent with the recommended relatable zones for the residential high-density land use designation. The blocks to the west and south have a land use designation of community mixed use, which is why you see commercial services in these locations. The subject property is within both the Midtown Master Plan area and the 1995 Reserve Street area plan. These area plans are amendments to the growth policy. The Reserve Street area plan acknowledges the need to maintain and enhance the area's diverse character and livability by allowing for diverse building types. The proposed zoning would allow for more diverse residential building types than the current zoning. The Midtown Master Plan references a strong and growing demand for multi-dwelling residential rental housing. The plan states that Midtown's low multi-dwelling vacancy rates indicate unmet demand for additional rental housing. The proposed zoning allows for multi-dwelling housing, whereas the current zoning does not. The City Growth Policy calls for a focus inward approach to encourage infill development in the urban core where infrastructure already exists and promotes mixed-use, compact development, and enhanced connectivity while limiting sprawl and promoting efficient use of existing infrastructure. The Community Design Housing and Safety and Wellness sections of the City Growth Policy encourage building where there is existing infrastructure and services, especially adequate vehicle and active transportation services. The proposed RM 135 zoning would increase density in an area with existing infrastructure served by trails, sidewalks, and bike lanes. Curbside sidewalk already exists along the parcel frontages. The subject property also has alley access for future parking. The parcel is currently served by city fire, police, sewer, and water. Additionally, bus stops serving mountain line routes 2, 6, and 8 are located within a half mile of the subject property. The 6 and 8 lines are approximately 1/10 of a mile from the parcel. The parcel is near commercial services and is within walking distance of two grocery stores. Shown here is the current zoning map with the property zoned RT 5.4. Parcels surrounding the subject property are also zoned RT 5.4, C1-4, and B2-2. This figure shows the subject parcel with the proposed RM 135 zone. This requested zoning district complies with both the growth policy recommendations for the area and allows for additional density near the existing commercially-zoned parcels and services to the west. Here is a comparison between the existing and proposed zoning districts. Both RT 5.4 and RM 135 zones allow for similar residential building types, land uses, and property line setbacks. The main difference between the two districts is RT 5.4 has a minimum area per unit requirement of 5,400 square feet, while the RM 135 has a minimum area per unit requirement of 1,000 square feet. On this 14,375-square-foot subject parcel, the RT 5.4 zone allows for a maximum density of two dwelling units, while the RM 135 zone would allow for a maximum of 14 units. The front, rear, and street-side setbacks are the same for both zoning districts. The interior side setback for the RT 5.4 zoning district is 7 1/2 feet, or 1/3 the building height, and the interior side setback for the RM 135 zoning district is 5 feet. The maximum building height in the RT 5.4 zoning district is 30 feet for buildings with a primary roof pitch of less than 8 and 10, and 35 feet for buildings with a primary roof pitch of 8 and 10 or greater. The maximum building height permitted in the RM 135 zoning district is 35 feet. Both zoning districts allow detached houses, lot-line houses, two-unit houses, and two-unit townhouses. RM 1-35 also allows multi-dwelling building types and three-unit-plus townhouses. The uses allowed in the RM 135 zoning district will remain consistent with those allowed in RT 5.4, except RM 135 also allows fraternities and sororities, colleges and universities, library and cultural exhibits, offices, personal improvement services, and residential support services. Non-accessory parking and a water testing facility would be conditional uses. Staff's recommendation is based on the review criteria provided in the Title 20 zoning ordinance. The requested rezoning complies with the land use designation and focus inward objectives of the City Growth Policy, permitting residential development at a similar but slightly higher scale than what is currently allowed while still aligned with the current surrounding zoning. Many of the same requirements apply to the RT 5.4 zone as do the RM 135 zone, including setbacks and nearly all of the same permitted land uses. The requested rezoning implements recommendations of both the Reserve Street area plan and the Midtown Master Plan, which are amendments to the growth policy. Future development must apply with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations, which ensures the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. The subject parcel is served by adequate public services, including city fire, city police, sewer, and water, and existing multimodal transportation infrastructure, making the property suitable for an increase in density. Because of similar setbacks in height, provision of light and air will be protected. The height limit of 35 feet in the RM 135 zoning district creates reasonable transition zone between the commercial zoning district to the west and south, and less intensive residential districts to the east and north. Though the permitted density would increase, the proposed zoning and current zoning require similar setbacks and have a similar height maximum. The RM 135 zoning district is compatible with the character and uses of neighboring residential properties. The character will be incompatible in terms of form. There will be no change to permitted uses, aside from the addition of fraternity, sorority, college/university, library/cultural exhibit, office, personal improvement service, and residential support services as allowed uses, and non-accessory parking and water testing facility as conditional uses. The rezoning considers the value of building and appropriate use of land because it complies with the land use designation in the growth policy and is compatible with adjacent uses and zoning. The zoning amendment would provide for an increase in housing, which is in great demand in Missoula and considered a changing condition. The rezoning is in the best interest of the city because the rezoning implements the recommendations of the R-Missoula 2035 Growth Policy for areas designated residential high-density or greater than 24 dwelling units per acre, while increasing density in an area with good access to services and transportation. The current zoning does not implement the growth policy recommendations. On the screen are the three criteria which must be met to constitute spot zoning. All three criteria have to be met to constitute spot zoning. The zoning district is and will remain residential. This is not considered spot zoning because the proposed zoning district is compatible with the growth policy's land use designation of residential high. The proposed residential zoning allows uses that are similar to those allowed by surrounding residential properties. It is not significantly different. Over time, the entire area surrounding the parcel is predicted to grow in density and in accordance with the land use designated in the R-Missoula 2035 Growth Policy. Surrounding property owners can rezone to a zoning district, allowing for higher density as well. Because the rezoning aligns with the growth policy, and neighboring properties are also eligible for rezoning, the proposed zoning does not meet Criteria 2 or 3 either. Title 20, Section 208540H provides for a formal protest petition to oppose a zoning amendment submitted to the zoning officer or on the public record before the City Council's vote, allowing sufficient time for the city clerk to determine the validity of the petition. When a valid protest petition has been submitted, approval of a zoning amendment requires a 2/3 majority vote of those City Council members present and voting. Current planning has received 12 protest petitions. This means that more than 25% of adjacent property owners have protested, and approval will require a 2/3 vote. Planning voted 6 to 1 to recommend the rezoning be approved. At this time, staff recommends City Council adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 2361 and 2359 West Kent and legally described as lots 4 through 7 and the east 15 feet of Lot 8 and Block 20 of Carline Edition located in Section 29 Township 13 North Range 19 West PPM from RT 5.4 residential or two-unit townhouses to RM 135 residential multi-dwelling based on the findings and fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present tonight in case they would like to comment or a City Council would like to ask them questions directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. All right. At this time, I'd like to offer the applicant or their representative an opportunity to add to the staff presentation, please.
Hello. Yeah, Mike Main with IMAG. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can, Michael.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Yeah, I'm joined by quite a few coworkers today, Paul, Tamara, Danny, and Joe. I appreciate your support and being here. As a team, we understand there's concern with almost all projects that are brought to public hearings. We also know that nobody enjoys seeing their neighborhood change. However, Missoula needs diverse housing options, and these infill projects provide a small but immediate solution. At the end of the day, we really appreciate staff and planning board's recommendation of approval. We are here to support the need for housing and assist the city in addressing any comments.
Thank you, Michael. And Tamara, or Tamara, I see that you're on. Is there anything you wish to present as well?
I'm here to support Mike and the applicant as well. I'm really excited about this proposal here that we have before you. Again, just to support Mike here, if you have any questions, let us know.
Okay. Thank you, Tamara. Appreciate that. All right. So we have had staff and applicant presentations, so we'll go ahead and move on to questions from council. Are there any questions from council members? Counselor Campbell.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you to staff for the presentation. And I have a question of staff. So ultimately, if the zoning were to reasonably be enacted, you had mentioned maximum possible density of 14 units. Can you go over what a potential residential application of that scope would look like, going through the review process if this zone change were enacted? And what would be the hoops generally that one would expect to develop of that scope for that neighborhood with that rezone to go through?
Sure. So they would apply for a commercial building permit. Planning Division specifically would be reviewing for compliance with our parking regulations, which number of parking spaces per unit is based on unit size, but is generally between one and two parking spaces per unit. They would also have to meet landscaping requirements, which are 20% of the land area is required to be provided for general landscaping. If the project contains more than 10 units, they'll be required to provide activity area. And then, of course, they'll have to meet the height and setback requirements, and our engineering may have other requirements as well.
Thank you. One follow-up, if I may?
Please, go ahead.
So dealing with parking specifically, I know it's a concern. It's been brought up repeatedly, given the limited amount of frontage that's on that side of the street now. So anything that would come in, it would be addressed in terms of, you know, what the zoning norms would require for whatever project that would come in, but it would be dealt with in terms of making sure that they're mitigating public health and safety concerns with, you know, concerns with inadequate off-street parking or inadequate parking within development itself, correct?
Correct. The number of parking spaces has to be provided as calculated as required. So if they could only fit X number of parking spaces, that may be able to affect the number of units that they can build.
Thank you for that. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Okay. You bet. Counselor Becerra.
Thank you. I guess my question's for Charlie. Do you know, based on the... Oh, this mic is super loud, sorry. Based on the potential uses allowed under that zoning, can you speak to the infrastructure, the current infrastructure being capable of handling the additional traffic? What the infrastructure would be required for that kind of increase in density?
Cassie Truphard, Planning Supervisor. As far as the infrastructure itself, that is something that's regulated by engineering. I don't know that I can speak much to that. Of course, parking will have to be paved, accessed from the alley. Additionally, they already have sidewalk, and it appears that the alley is already paved. So with development, I know engineering requires them to fix any broken or hazardous sidewalk as well.
Thank you, Cassie. And I see Troy Monroe has his hand up as well. Go ahead, Troy.
Thank you. Troy Monroe, City Engineer for Development Review. We did look at this area for infrastructure related to utilities. It is served by city water, city sewer. The city water is on 6-inch mains, so the fire hydrants are at a limited capacity. All that means is that, based on the type of development, they may be required to mitigate with sprinklers. Other than that, all the roads meets, can handle the additional traffic and everything else, as mentioned beforehand, with most of the parking would be coming off of the alley.
Okay. Please.
And Troy, should any issue come up during the development of this property, there would be a chance to require mitigation measures during the building permit approval? Is that correct?
Yes. It's limited to what would be necessary for that specific building, not subdivision mitigations, but definitely whatever would be necessary for that building. There would not be any traffic impact studies required, given the number of units possible. So it would just be what would be required for that specific building.
Great. Thank you. You bet. Counselor Nijan?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Question for staff or maybe the developer, and the answer might be that none of you know this, but I think that with some of the comments we've heard, there's concern about the increasing density and hearing the number 14. Is there any way to kind of realistically tell with parking requirements and the current kind of two-lot parcel size what the maximum number of units somebody could realistically get on that? I see Paul deep breathing, so maybe he's ready to answer that, too.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Paul, we can hear you.
Well, I've just, you know, I got deep breathing, no matter what I do, so excuse me. But yeah, Paul Forsting, planner at IMAG. You can call me he, him, or man. I'm here to just talk about this project here. Yeah, we can fit five buildings back there, and they're going to look really nice. Thank you.
Did you get your question answered there? Maybe not.
Five parking spaces.
Cassie Truphard?
Five parking spaces? Is that what you're saying?
Five units, five parking spaces. Five new units in the back.
Thanks.
Cassie, go ahead.
Yeah. I'll just add that that may be the plan for the site. Of course, if they keep the two existing structures, with a 20-foot rear setback, the space would be pretty limited. If someone were to scrap the site completely down the line, it is really hard to say what realistically fits, but with smaller unit sizes on other properties with the zoning, they can often reach the maximum density.
Okay. Thank you, Cassie. Are there other questions from council? Not seeing any in the room here. Not seeing any hands raised online. Okay. Then we'll go ahead and wrap up the questions from council, and I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Just to note for the public, the motion is not necessarily on the floor yet, but this is adopting the ordinance as Charlie read on record. So I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. We do keep comments to three minutes. Come on up and introduce yourself, and please spell your last name. And anybody wishing to speak to the specific agenda item, you're welcome to come up now. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sean Engell. I got some handouts here. Before we start, I'd like to hand them out to everybody.
Absolutely. Can we go ahead and hand those to the officer? And she'll make sure she gets those to council. Thank you so much.
Cool. My name's Sean Engell. That's spelled S-H-A-W-N-E-G-E-L-L-A-N-T. I am in Ward 5. Last me, I didn't do so well in public speaking, so this time I wrote a speech and made some pretty handouts there. The handouts that you see before you are made in AutoCAD. There are two-scale 3D drawings of the neighborhood to give you a visual representation on what this could actually look like. Might help answer some questions that you guys had. There is no question that Missoula has a housing affordability issue, and I understand that there is a growth policy put in place in regards to that, but within that growth policy lies a list of statutes that ensures that our city is developed responsibly. Given the following reasons, we as neighbors agree that this is an irresponsible development and that this particular rezoning should be denied. This rezoning states that 14 dwelling units may be built on this parcel. By voting yes on this rezoning, you would be allowing a structure that legally wouldn't be able to be built. Please see drawings. Section 20 states that a structure within the RM 135 zoning must have a front and back minimum setbacks of 20 feet. It also states that each dwelling unit must be at least 800 square feet and have provisions for 1 1/2 parking spaces of off-street parking. As you can see by the drawings I gave you, even a three-story building could not accommodate these requirements and also would not fit in the zoning limitations. The proposal and the way that it is currently written cannot meet city standards. Furthermore, there have been no released drawings of the intended development by the owner or their representative, so passing this rezoning, bypassing this rezoning, you'd really have no idea what you're voting for. Statute 1H in that list of statutes says whether the zoning considers the character of the district. The proposed rezoning clearly does not. You can see for yourself by the drawings. The planning board made the comment that this area is going to, quote, "drastically change." How is this area supposed to drastically change and remain with the same characteristics? Statute 1I, whether the zoning request conserves the value of the buildings. This does not say the value of the property. It says the value of the buildings. After those apartments are built next to my property, my home becomes worth nothing because only a developer would want to purchase my property, and their intentions would be to remove my house in order to fit more apartments. This means that I lose all of the sweat equity that I placed into my own home and therefore is devalued. Statute 1E states the provisions for adequate light and air to be considered. A 35-foot structure that is 10 feet east of the neighboring house would certainly block a majority of the day's light in the neighboring parcel. Furthermore, 12 out of 12 neighbors that reached out to us have signed petitions to block this rezoning. Lastly, I think of places like Malfunction Junction, where Brooks and Russell Street intersect. Every one of us have been there, and every one of us has driven through there and has had the thought, who in their right... and has had the thought, who in their right mind has designed this? Well, it is apparent that this proposal in front of you is about as ridiculous as that intersection. And it is now your responsibility as council city members to stop bad designs in our city. I'm opening any questions if I have any time left.
You have reached past your three minutes, but I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item?
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Hawkins, H-A-W-K-I-N-S. My wife and I live at 2344 West Kent Avenue. We are in Ward 6 and the center line of West Kent Avenue is the dividing line between Ward 6 and Ward 5 and we would be looking directly across the street of the proposed rezon. The exhibit I have before you that's being passed around is just some of our concerns that we have. When you look at what is our neighborhood, and I get that neighborhood can be defined as you want based on scale, but I'm looking at our block on the north side of West Kent and the block on the south side of West Kent, which is predominantly single-story, single-family homes. There's one duplex and I've drawn in for the 2359, 2361 lots there. In the red is the setbacks. This is all drawn to scale. Keynote item 5 is the potential parking pad for 12 units to fit. City of Missoula standard 784. I did not account for ADA parking or ADA access, but doing so results in a building pad, which is the blue. If you go to the back of the existing structures, right up to the edge of the parking, the potential for, you know, 12, they've said five units tonight, but once you rezone, that gives the potential that if nothing's torn down, you're gonna cram 12 units of a building pad into 3,500 square feet, plus or minus. And our concerns is that's mid-block and you're suddenly gonna increase density by 600% mid-block in such a tiny area. What does that do for the quality of life for the people that are currently renting in the existing houses? I know that they are single families, they have pets, they're in the backyards, they're gonna lose their backyards. The people renting there, as a couple that rented for over a decade, you don't have much landscape space, much yard space. What's their quality of life gonna be once the rezon happens? And how does that expand outward to the rest of us? Further, how are these proposed buildings or building gonna fit into the character of our neighborhood? Because, you know, page 63 of the growth policy goal H4 is provide for diverse housing needs while protecting the strong sense of place in community neighborhoods through compatible residential developments. And we are struggling with how is this substantial increase compatible in keeping the character of our neighborhood right now? And I know things change over time and everything. I can't remember the quote from Field of Dreams, you know. Things will change over time, but right now, we buy homes, you know. We rent it forever. We like, we're humans, we like stability. This is a big drastic change. Also, as people that rented for a long time, you get a lot of coming and going. Okay. And then, lastly, is will all the parking be satisfied in the alley? Or does the developer and developers representative just plan on negatively impacting the public right of way for this private project? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others that wish to speak on this agenda item this evening? Come on up.
Hello?
Hi.
My name is Thiel Lien, L-I-E-N, and I'm in Ward 5, one of the next-door neighbors to this redevelopment. So, in a quote from the city published by the Missoulian states that the city wishes to explore ways to allow for more housing options and housing that is more affordable by design while preserving what residents value about Missoula neighborhoods. I believe this rezoning is against that statement and belief. That's not to say I'm in conflict with multi-dwelling units. I know there's an unmet demand for rental units, but I also know there is a demand for affordable homes for purchase within Missoula. Having been active in these previous meetings, I've been met with the same empty buzzwords against our concerns bringing vibrancy and pioneering and more robust environments. I've also heard preserving the past is a detriment. But this increase in people moving to Missoula, people wanting to stay, enjoy it for its character and its neighborhoods, not line blocks of condos in larger cities that people are moving away from. I implore the council to think outside the targeted growth plan and select a more realistic zoning ordinance. And correct me if I'm wrong, RM 2.7, which would allow around five units, which seem to be within the existing plan, which would allow for that plan and not another developer at a later time to build a bigger and more suffocating development. This would support more growth, but also preserve the character and the sense of place within our neighborhood, which is in our review criteria. We've been told it's unfortunate that we're the first of this development among the planning committee. We've been told people have given up their similar properties with similar development issues, but at least we have the advantage to choose multi-dwellings within our property, too. And I'm gonna be completely transparent, we were lucky to get our home. This is our first home. Three years ago, we bought it. Before that, we were renting a condo. I've been employed with the City of Missoula for those three years as well. The implied idea that we would be lucky to develop our home into condos and move to where? We wouldn't be able to afford another home within Missoula. We would end up renting at similar condos somewhere else in the city or buying from another home outside of Missoula. This growth policy is further segregating classes and lower-income families, by demolishing these older affordable homes and making them into multi-dwelling rental units. I believe this growth policy, this growth plan is a Band-Aid that further regulations need to be put in place to protect existing homes and existing Missoulians. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others that wish to provide public comment on this agenda item this evening? Hi there.
Hello. My name is James Crosby, C-R-O-S-B-Y. And I'm here to comment on something else, but you never know when you're gonna be called to speak. So, I'm a little ashamed to say it on the record, but I'm from California. And I lived in Venice. And what I saw in Venice was a beautiful charming neighborhood turned into enormous buildings. And it was really sad. And when I moved to Missoula three years ago, I was lucky to land on Kiwanis Park, which is beautiful. And I watched while I lived there as a couple charming little bungalows got torn down for big condos. And it was really sad. And as a person who struggled with housing in Missoula a couple of times, I wanna speak up for the sense of place that some things aren't worth just cramming through. Some bungalows are worth preserving. The architecture is unique. It's part of the story of Missoula is where we came from. So, where we have these opportunities to go ham out by Mullin and build a lot, because there's not a lot out there, it blends in, I would advise the city council to consider rezoning in these places with respect to what's around it. Maybe further development starts with duplexes and three levels start small so that nobody feels crowded out and nobody loses their Big Sky that they came to Missoula for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others this evening that wish to speak on this agenda item? Come on up.
My name's Edmund Ward. I've lived in Missoula for 43 years and it's the Garden City. And rezoning and the way that things have been going lately disturbs me and that the city is changing dramatically in these cute little neighborhoods. I raised my son on Cleveland Street and it's, I want to keep this, the neighborhoods as they are. And I know we need more housing, but I believe that we can do it in a way that matches the neighborhoods in the way that they were designed initially. And rezoning with these giant buildings and taking the sun away from most of the gardens that we have, I think is ridiculous. And I think, long-term, we need to look at solar energy for a lot of the houses. And I think we really need to look at how we affect our neighbors' view shed. I think that's critical. And we need to look out not a year or two or five, but I think we should be looking out 20 years. And I agree with the gentleman that was just up here that we need to do more development outside of, like down the Mullin Road area and change that portion rather than disturbing the beautiful city that we have. And so, I oppose this rezoning that you guys have up here right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others that wish to speak tonight? Come on up.
My name is Lori Welch and I am a longtime resident of Missoula. And I've just seen, over the course of the many years that I've lived here, our neighborhood's changing and a lot of high-density development. And I think it is just a degradation for everyone that lives in the neighborhoods. It creates problems with parking and I'm afraid of not having enough parking requirements for people. And it can create problems for neighbors when they don't have enough space. So, I would just like to agree with those people who have spoken this evening to say that as we move forward and we look at developing the city and creating more housing, that we do it in a very mindful way that's respectful to the characteristic of the neighborhoods as they are now. And, yeah, I'd like that to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Come on up.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Hawkins. I also live in Ward 6, across the street from this proposed development. I wasn't planning on making a comment tonight, but I felt compelled to. There was a rather flippant response to, I think, Mr. Nugent's question, where Mr. Forsting said, "We're gonna put up five units. They're gonna look awesome." And then, I believe Cassie followed up with a very honest response of, "If the units, the existing units stay, it might be five. If they're tore down, it could be up to 14." And to follow up with what Thiel said, this could be, I believe, RM 2.7 or RT 2.7, which would allow, I believe, five to seven parcels or, excuse me, units on the parcel. I get that this is an area that's proposed to be high-density. So, the planning board went with the highest density as possible. But just because we can doesn't mean we should. So, I'm asking all of you to please reject this proposal tonight and send it back so that they could go to maybe an RM 2.7, which would be more amenable for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others in the audience that wish to speak on this agenda item this evening? Okay, not seeing anybody here in the room. Is there anybody online that wishes to speak to Agenda Item 5.1? Okay, not seeing any? All right, then. Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this agenda item. And we'll go ahead and we will move to council motion and discussion on this. Are there any council questions, comments, discussion? Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. I didn't prepare comments, but my initial thoughts are, it's just, as a Ward 6 city council representative, I feel like there's a lot happening in my ward. We have a lot of existing homes that are being purchased by developers where the maximum amount of density is then being put in and they don't match the neighborhood. The infrastructure in Ward 6 cannot accommodate all of these dense developments that are going in. We have a couple parks. One of them's right next to the Johnson Street Shelter. The other one is tucked in behind some houses off River Road with no sidewalks to get to it. And it's hard for me to watch Ward 6 change like this. Change is inevitable. I appreciate the high-density going in and I think it makes sense. I'd love to see some of these developments going into Ward 1 and Ward 3, but they're happening in Ward 6 and Ward 2 and these are our lower socioeconomic neighborhoods. And the fill of Franklin to the Fort is really being affected by all the development and the lack of infrastructure. And I wish that our code reform could come sooner to kind of mitigate some of these maximum-density developments that are going in because it does affect our neighborhood and it does affect how it feels and it affects whether or not people wanna live there. I think that this development is gonna cause parking problems. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. We have some really concerned citizens who've brought up some really good points and it's just, this is more of a comment than anything. It's just frustrating to watch Ward 6 change the way it's changing in that the new development does not fit the fill of the neighborhood. Every time we have a boundary change, Ward 6 gets piecemealed off into other wards. And it's hard to watch and I guess I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan, and I apologize to the group. I meant to ask for a motion prior to council comments. So, sorry that your comment was out of order, but I hope that it's all right if I could stop now and ask for a motion and I'll look to Land Use Planning Chair, Counselor Nugent, for that?
Yes, and then I have questions.
Great.
The motion, as recommended by staff, is move city council adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 2361 and 2359 West Kent Avenue and legally describe lots 4 through 7 in the east 15 feet of Lot 8 of Carline Edition, located in Section 29 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, from RT 5.4 residential two-unit townhouse to RM 135 residential multi-dwelling.
Thank you, Counselor Nugent, and your comments, please.
I have questions.
Or questions, I'm sorry.
For Charlie or Cassie, the commenters referenced different zoning types that would both fit the growth plan and allow more density on the lot, but give more certainty around the maximum density. The, what we are suggesting it be rezoned to is what the owner, the developer requested, correct?
That's correct.
Are there, are there other zoning designations, I guess, that would... Never mind, I can't ask that question because it asks for your opinion and I don't, don't think that's appropriate. I'm gonna switch on here. One of the public commenters made a diagram, which I sent a photo of to you and hopefully it was okay. But it referenced 14 units on the lots and showed a minimum of 800 square feet, said there'd have to be first-level parking. And so, the structure would extend into the front minimum setback and extend into the rear minimum setback. Can you walk us through how a developer would be able to do that? As in, who do they have to get permission from to build in the setbacks?
There is not a lot of circumstances in which we would approve a building in the setbacks. They would have to apply for a variance and they would need to provide evidence of hardship, which I don't see here. So, no, they would not be able to build into the setback. There is a limited buildable area.
What unit count does the recreation area requirement get triggered for the open area?
10.
Just to add a little context to the landscaping, too, whether it's 10 or less units or 10 or more, it's 35% of the parcel area either way. What happens at 10 is just 20% becomes a more specific activity area and 15 is general landscaping, but still, you know, about a third of the site.
Thanks.
Counselor Becerra?
I had a similar question to Mr. Nugent and I guess I'm not asking for your opinion, this is for staff. I'm asking about, there's been times when developments or... I'm asking about, there's been times when developments, or CPI receives a request for a rezone with a specific project in mind, but staff is able to look at different zoning districts that still meet the growth policy and get to a higher density, but perhaps not what the developer is intending to do. Was that something that was explored during this process?
Yes, it was. So, RM 1-35, there are current relatable zoning districts that actually allow for more density of the current relatable zoning districts, that is, one of the lower-density ones. That one was also recommended by staff due to the 35-foot building height, which we thought would be more appropriate for this area than the other 45-foot building heights. So it was considered.
Am I able to help provide context to both Nugent's? I don't want to go out of order here, but I thought it might be helpful.
Joe, hold on one second. Let me just check in with Counselor Basara to see if she's got a follow-up first for
I lost my train of thought, so that's fine.
Okay. And, Joe, we can go ahead and hear your comment now. And please, please make sure you identify yourself. I'm assuming you're with Imeg, but I could be wrong there.
I am, and Ms. Basara, I'm sorry for derailing your train of thought. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context. My name is Joe Denert, D-E-H-N-E-R-T, and I work with Mike, and obviously, we've been working with the applicant here and the landowner for this proposal. And, you know, the RM 135 came about because of the growth policy here. You know, within the current relatable zoning designations that we have, like Cassie said, the RM 135 is one of the lower densities, and it was really recommended because of the building height. And I believe, and Cassie and staff might be able to help out here, but going to a recommended land use designation that's not within the current relatable zoning designations, I believe, is a possibility. But, you know, the entire impetus behind the RM 135 was the five townhouses that have been mentioned. And, oh, sorry about that. And, you know, I know that a few people have mentioned the different layouts, and you guys have had a few things before you. It would have been great to see those. But I'm trying to share my screen here, which might be helpful for council and those that can actually see it in the, in the audience. It might be tough.
We can see that, Joe. Yep, it's on screen. It is a little bit hard to see, but if you can make it a little bit bigger, that'll help. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to zoom in here for you all. I'm really just trying to provide a little color from, from the landowner's perspective here, because I hear the validity in all these public comments. And there's obviously the components of this conversation that are related, you know, to the base, you know, one-liner of, "We substantially comply with the applicable regulations. You know, we're growth policy compliant, and I understand that contemplating uses is kind of a gray area here," right? Because we're, you would be approving a rezone on, on property, not necessarily the proposed development. But as the, as one of the landowners, the concerned landowners in the area said, "It's just not possible." The landscaping plans that are, the landscaping requirements that are triggered above 10 units eradicate so much of the site already. Then you have parking requirements that have to be met. We're talking about a density here that really is a relatable hand that's dealt to landowners in the area of, "These are the zoning designations that we think make sense with the growth policy, and it's not a perfect system, but the parcel size here dictates everything." So yes, hypothetically, a 14-foot multi-dwelling building, I agree with James from Vettis. I mean, it's ridiculous. It doesn't make sense here, but it's also impossible here. And I think that that is important within the scope of the conversation, even though we can't vote on the five-unit TED layout. It works, and it works because of the things that Troy mentioned on the front end, which is services, you know, the water service along Kent and the parking in the alley. That makes sense. It's not going to be a huge impact on traffic in the area. It's for those reasons that the RM 135 is being proposed here. It's not to eventually, you know, sell it off to a multifamily developer, because a multifamily developer would need six to seven parcels in this area to make both landscaping work and also the parking requirements for a larger building. I know it's atypical to see these pockets of RM 135 as well, but it's kind of an imperfect system that oftentimes, you know, it gets misconstrued with the intent. And I do believe the intent here is just to put up some Teds, which I do think helps the housing situation in Missoula. I do think that it is the direction that certain neighborhoods do need ahead, but obviously, you know, I'm bringing this up just to help with the conversations that have happened to this point, and I'll get off my soapbox and my pedestal. I appreciate you guys letting me speak, and sorry for breaking decorum here.
Thank you, Mr. Denert. And just for good of the conversation, the TED is in referral to townhome-exempt development.
Yes, sorry. My apologies.
That's okay. It's all right. All right, so we are in council discussion comments. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Ken, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to nail this down. So twice now, we've heard five units. We've seen it appears to be a proposal of sorts for five units in townhome fashion. So, and I would direct this to staff, planning staff. I mean, does there exist a particular zone that has a maximum density less than what's being proposed now, yet would allow a five-unit development and yet would meet the spirit of the growth policy overlay?
Yes, there are zoning districts that allow for less density, medium density, like you're describing, but they are not current relatable zoning districts to the growth policy.
May I also just add that the 2.7 zoning district would require 2,700 square feet, which would only allow for five total units, and what Joe has shown us is seven units.
Counselor Campbell?
Okay, then, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
You bet. Other questions or comments from council? Counselor Carlino?
Yep. I think a lot of good points have been brought up. I mean, I think the Franklin to the Fort neighborhood, as well as like the north side, west side, are disproportionately carrying the development in our town. And I think, you know, we've seen with our land use and equity map that, you know, that's added to certain neighborhoods being gentrified while other neighborhoods not allowing for development. We've, and overall, I think, you know, the answer isn't to block development in, in this situation. I think the answer is to stop blocking development in other neighborhoods with our code reform and with other rezones. We need to allow for housing like this to be built in all neighborhoods equitably and not keep putting it all into one or two neighborhoods. So I think with the code reform, we can hopefully get to that point. But I mean, if we don't allow building in Missoula, it's going to keep building out and out, and we're going to sprawl. We're going to take up our firm land and destroy a lot more land than if we allow building where we've already built in town. And, you know, whatever this development ends up to be, it's going to be homes for Missoulians, and we need many, many more of those as people are moving from California or to Arizona or from wherever. I think we should welcome them into Missoula, and if we don't build new homes, they're going to take up the homes that are already here that people live in. So we need to have an abundance of homes of all types in all neighborhoods, and this is one step in the positive direction for that. And it's definitely not lost on to me that Franklin to the Fort neighborhood and the north side, west side are taking up the vast majority of the development right now. And I think we need to more evenly spread it out across the town, and I'm totally okay with moving forward and passing this today to allow these units to be built and allow more homes that we desperately need in Missoula right now.
Thank you, Counselor Carlino. Are there other council comments or discussion? Counselor Jones?
There we go. Wanted to say thank you to everybody that came down to provide comment tonight. We have these rezones on a pretty constant basis and desperately need more housing and more density in Missoula, but I certainly hear the reasons and the arguments that the neighbors bring up. And so I would encourage folks to get involved with our code reform process and engage with that and provide your input, because the point of that is to not have rezones done on an ad hoc basis, but instead to have a holistic vision for our city and envision what it, what we want it to look like and how it can be, how it can change, but how people, what, what they want to see. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's why we are in this two-and-a-half to three-year holistic code reform process exactly because of the reasons that you raised tonight, because I think it gives people a much better sense of where our community is going, what it's going to look like. I know this is in your neighborhood tonight, but I did want to put that out there, and I hope you can lean in on that, provide your input. It's really valuable that you can find it on the city website, how to engage. So thank you for coming down tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Other council questions or council comments? Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I just wanted to add, you've heard a lot of us ask questions about the realistic possibility of the parcels reaching the size or the maximum density that's kind of discussed in this. The attorneys can correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't condition a rezone. So the, the map they put up, we can't, under state law, we can't say they have to only do that. We basically either have to look at a rezone and say, "Yes, it follows the growth policy," which zoning is supposed to follow the growth policy, or "No, it does not." A little bit more complicated than that, but I think if that was an option available to us tonight, you would probably hear council members jumping up on it, but I wanted to put that out there, that that, conditioning it based on that map is not a tool that we have.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent. Okay, not seeing any additional council questions or comments, and I'm looking for counselors that are joining us online, and I'm not seeing any questions from our counselors online. All right. So, we have heard the staff presentation, and we've had the opportunity to hear public comment, council discussion, so we will go, we will go ahead and move to a roll call vote on this item. So Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
Okay. Putting on item 5.1, adopting the ordinance to rezone the subject property located on West Kent Avenue, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Carlino? Palmer?
Yes.
Jones? Jordan? Nelson? Nugent? Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Ann Vasika? That is nine in favor and three opposed. I believe that does pass with a two-thirds report.
That's the math I have as well. Nine is required for an affirmed vote, and we do have nine votes in favor, so this ordinance does pass this evening. I want to thank everybody very much for their comments and recognize the tension that change is, is, I think, causing for us all in our community, and we absolutely, we hear that. We do recognize in this particular situation that we are moving forward with, I suppose, a growth policy, but appreciate the dialogue and the folks coming down here to express opinion this evening. And thank you, council, for all of your thoughtful questions and comments this evening, as well as to city staff and members of the development team that came down tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Have a good evening.
Okay, I believe that wraps up item 5.1. That is all we have for our public hearings this evening. So I'll mention that we don't have any new business, and we will... Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. He came on afterwards. Yeah. Thank you, though. Appreciate that. Thank you. So it is opportunity now for public comments for items remaining on the agenda, and that includes the consent agenda and regular business. As I mentioned at the beginning, we do not have any regular business this evening, and so we'll go ahead and hear from Ms. Trimble the items that are on the consent agenda. So the city clerk will go ahead and read these aloud, so folks watching on MCAT, as well as here in the audience, those will go on screen, and we'll see what is on the consent agenda, and then we'll take public comment on that. So Ms. Trimble, go right ahead, please.
All right. On this evening's consent agenda, just a few items. We have a motion to approve accounts payable or claims for checks dated April 2, 2024 in the amount of $1,104,555.94. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the 2023 Safe Streets for All grant agreement. A motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional service agreement with Sprinkler Maniac LLC to provide services to operate and maintain the wastewater division Poplar Farm irrigation system for a sum not to exceed $110,000. We have a motion to approve a resolution amending the existing Clark Fork Market, excuse me, Clark Fork Farmers Market to include the river lot and obtain a permit to close the roundabout on Patty Street on Saturdays from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. throughout the duration of the market season. And finally, a motion to approve a resolution declaring certain city of Missoula property as surplus and authorizing its disposal or sale.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Do any counselors wish to separate any of the consent agenda items? Okay, not seeing any. Then we'll go ahead and take public comment on the consent agenda. And is there, I will start with a hand that's been raised. Matt Larson, please go right ahead.
Matt Larson, Ward Three.
There we go.
Thank you. I wanted to speak to the $110,000 that we're going to spend again for irrigation of the Poplar Farm. I think this is an exorbitant sum of money to spend on, on the task, but I do think that the task is a good one, I guess, but we're spending so much money on this every year that we could be diverting to more urgent tasks with the watershed, you know, as a result of the houselessness crisis, homelessness crisis. There's a bunch of biohazards, syringes, needles, and all types of nasty things that are being thrown into the river right now, to which the city has only committed about $130-some thousand to date to clean up. I look at this single bid contract as one of the ways we could, we could definitely reduce our financial overhead here. $110,000 to operate irrigation is ridiculous, including, I believe, there's a $575 charge per day for an air compressor in the contract, which is a little ridiculous as well. It just points out like the priorities of the city. We could definitely be spending our money more wisely. Just today, just this week, we're going to spend $1.4 million on claims. So I think we could just spend our money more wisely.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. I'll stick with folks that are online and see that there is a John Doerr that has his
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
I'm not sure if this is relevant specifically to this topic, but the poplar growth, is it the one that there was in the Julian article about cutting it down? about cutting it down and mulching it on a, a couple of years' time horizon. If that's the case, I just wanted to express that I was concerned that that's perhaps not the, the best use for the lumber or the wood that's there, the forest product. If my limited research is true, there are lots of industrial uses for poplars, like pallet wood, tangible in-home trim, finished carpentry, also snowboards and skateboards. And there are several industrial buyers of the wood. And if this comment is relevant in this place, I just wanted to express that I hope that the diligence to find a broker of, of that particular type of forest product are tracked down and the, the final part of the poplar is not simply to become mulched. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Doer. I don't see anybody else online for public comment on the consent agenda. And so I'll go ahead and shift to folks that are in the room. Is there anybody in the room this evening that wishes to speak on items on the consent agenda? Okay, not seeing anybody in the room then. That closes our public comment on the consent agenda. And we will go ahead and I'll go ahead and do a voice vote for the consent agenda. And so if we are ready for that and folks are online and our city council members online can unmute themselves. Are we ready, Ms. Trimble? Go ahead and do a voice vote when you're ready.
I'm voting on the consent agenda. Items 8.1 through 8.5, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by like sign. That passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our consent agenda. We have no regular business under item number nine. And so that brings us to agenda item number 10, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Folks are welcome to come on up. Remember, we do have a time limit of about three minutes. Please identify your name and spell your last name, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandon Wayne Bryant, longtime city council, city member. Sorry, not a council member. Forgive me. Congratulations, Mayor Davis, for your win. Thought it was pretty astounding. I like to see the change that is going on around here. I, I'd actually like to agree with the people who had their houses, concern about their houses, because I think that there's a better way to go about things. If we remember, four years ago, I was thrown in jail for bringing up some of the same issues that were brought up before city council today, and I never got justice for what happened to me and was denied providence for myself. And I just want to remind you guys about honesty and integrity. And I would like to somehow request from, I thought Matt Jennings was going to be here and he was the prosecutor for my trial. And I was hoping to ask him publicly for some justice regarding my case, but maybe you guys can deliver that to him. But keep up the good work. I hope to see you guys later.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne Bryant. And just for your information, Mr. Jennings is with the county attorney's office. But we can do our best.
I've already reached out to him.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure you knew where he was. Thank you. Are there others in the audience this evening that wish to speak on items not on the agenda?
Jeffrey Oswald, Ward 4. O S W A L D. I was in a council meeting last summer when David Aronofsky was expressing grave concerns about the camping ordinance in town as, I think at that point, it was a temporary one. And then the, the city reverted to the previous one, which was more restrictive. And at that time, he proposed that he could spend an hour and a half and, and put together something that would be in keeping with the Ninth Circuit Court's decision on sleeping in public, in which it was determined by that court that if there was not adequate shelter space for every homeless person in town, that it was cruel and unusual punishment to cite them for camping on public property. Since the weather's got warm, I, I live in the neighborhood of the Johnson Center. And I've also spent a lot of time talking to people who are staying there. Many of them have left the Johnson Center since the weather was better because the place is intolerable for them. There's, I've been told by, I was told the other day by a widow who's staying there who became homeless when her husband died and was no longer able to meet the expense of, of a home who's disabled. And she said that she's routinely bullied by other people in there for cigarettes. And that's a day-to-day experience of other people I've talked to in that area, too. The place is not a good place. And as far as I understand it, the city really doesn't have a replacement for it at this point. But what they do have is plenty of police officers and city workers to move people out of the place that they've put their tents up, so they don't have to be in there. If it is recognized by a higher-type court, that, a federal court, that it is cruel and unusual punishment to force people to move where they're camping or tell them that they can't, I don't understand how the city government of Missoula believes it is a just thing to override that determination. And it bothers me because I've, I've met people who are fleeing from the homeless center that the city has paid to maintain. And they're decent people that want to move forward in life and are unable to because they can't find a decent place to get a good night's sleep in this town. And they don't have the resources to move someplace else, aside from a thumb.
Mr. Oswald, your past three minutes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Other folks in the room that wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda this evening?
Yes. What's up, counselors? James Crosby, C R O S B Y. James from Venice. I knew I would immediately regret that. Shouldn't have brought it up. But I do currently live in Ward 3 and I do pay taxes in Montana. It's the only place that I live and I'm a renter here. And I'm here tonight with my unique experience in California as part of my extensive resume of opinions regarding how to handle a crisis of homelessness. And the reason I'm here tonight, I read an article about the project of coming up with solutions and how the city is all coming together and a lot of people are discussing it. And the thing that I want to keep first and foremost in everybody's mind is dignity. And as difficult as it is to see people day in, day out, suffering, what I learned in California is that you can get desensitized to it. And you can come to think it's normal for people to be living under bridges and living on riverbanks. And while I know the Clark Fork is a beautiful river to live along, having just celebrated Zero Waste Day, we owe it to ourselves to keep the trash under control. So whatever our solutions entail, we need to keep in mind the dignity of these people, but also the beauty of our community. And as my time is running out, there's an example of this in, I believe it was Chicago policing. Malcolm Gladwell talked about the black marble. And it was a precinct that nobody, there's a, a, a beat that nobody wanted. So they assigned it by giving the black marble. And when people had to reach into a bag and they ended up with the black marble, they hated it. But one cadet, one rookie chose the black marble and he turned that neighborhood around. And in dealing with this crisis, if we all choose the black marble, think about where in your ward could somebody go if they needed to rest? And if we all choose where we can send these people, we can give them a place to go. We don't have to keep telling them where they can't be. We can say, please, go here. Because that's really all they want, is a place to go rest. And to conclude, I want to recognize that we had a really low snow winter and we could be looking at a high fire summer. If we had a lot of people coming to Missoula because the air quality where they was, where they were was no good, and they were just coming through real quick, where can they go? If that was you and your family and your one car and your whole world, and you just needed a, a place to be for a little bit, where could they go? So thank you very much for your time and thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Crosby. All right, others in the audience that wish to speak on items not on the agenda this evening? Okay, not seeing any in the room. We do have a couple of folks online. I'll go ahead and start with the phone number, 406-529-16. See a phone number there? Are you able to unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
Hi, this is Travis Matheer. Last name is M A T E E R. And as the Trash Alchemist, I like to offer solutions to people. But sometimes it's, it's difficult to offer good ideas and solutions in the city. Right now, I'm trying to coordinate a responsible urban camp cleanup along the West Broadway corridor on April 8th. I got a hard no from Parks and Rec about the West Broadway Island area. Here's my idea. I like to be adaptive and try and be flexible. So how about people go out and hand out trash bags to the people currently living there and they can place some of their trash items, you know, make that selection process themselves, place it in the trash bag, and then we can take, as volunteers, those bags maybe to a dumpster. My next issue is trying to find a place to place the dumpster. After about four or five calls to different people around the city, you know, getting sent different places that wasn't accurate, which is just what you'd have to deal with when you deal with bureaucracy, I finally got to the right person who told me it was going to be $100 to put a dumpster on at City Street. And so I kind of laughed. I thought that was pretty funny. Told him I was going to report on it, my blog. And then I said I'd find the private sector to help me. Still kind of a struggle to find where I might be able to place the dumpster, but I have this really good idea. I'm not going to share it yet. But you guys might have to guess where I'm going to place the trash. If I can't find a place to get a dumpster, I might deposit this trash. It's city land. You guys can play a little guessing game, like where's Travis going to put the trash? But I think it could be a fun game for us to play. April 8th, I will be doing some kind of cleanup. It's going to be a joy for me, I think, because I get to read poetry and my poetry is pretty awesome as everyone is starting to get a sense of as I read it, different places, sometimes the megaphone, sometimes not. I'm probably getting close to three minutes, but I'll finish with this. I did go to University of Montana campus and I chose not to use the megaphone because so many students out there were enjoying the sun and they said it would disrupt them if I did something about like free speech, you know, telling about corruption. They chose not to know about corruption today. It is April Fool's Day, though. And so I, I hope none of them have to report serious crimes to certain people within law enforcement. I don't know if they liked the response they get 10, 15 years after John Krakauer. Anyways, I'm pretty close to my time. April 8th, the Trash Alchemist will be removing trash. And where is he going to put it? You guys get to guess. Have a fun evening, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Matheer. Mr. Larson, you're next.
Matts Larson, Ward 3. I just wanted to continue to protest the placement of general comments an hour and a half plus into the meeting. I think it's, it's disrespectful to the older people in the audience that, and people that have to, you know, go about their business during the day and can't stay up late. I, I think that we can offer them a steadfast time when general comment will be, as opposed to an abstract. I know it's number 14 or number 12 on the agenda or whatever number it is, but there is no time and a place for general comments. It, it is a moving target continually, as we're an hour and a half from the meeting's start and just now getting to general commentary. It's also not been changed for any of the committee meetings, which remain the same format as was previously engaged in, in the, the city council here before this rule change. So I, I think it's just kind of duplicitous of the city council and the city to, to try and prevent people from engaging in this manner. And it, it, it just really does show the, the status of where, where the priorities lie with the, the city council. I, I, you know, I, I think that we should at least maybe agree on a time. Like if, if the meeting goes on for multiple hours, maybe one hour in should be general comments. But I don't know. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Larson. All right, not seeing any others online. Just taking a quick scan here. All right. Then that does conclude our public comment on non-agenda items. Thanks, everyone. I'll go ahead and shift to agenda item number 11, which is communications from the mayor. I just wanted to make a brief announcement that the staff are hosting a couple of different activities this week, opportunities to help Missoula craft a new strategy to address houselessness. So you heard folks earlier refer to the Urban Camping Working Group and that's very specific to folks that are living unsheltered and sleeping in public places. And the city for a long time has had a plan to address folks that are living houseless and unsheltered. That plan has expired and we are interested in moving forward with another community-driven plan. So there will be a town hall on Thursday, April 4th, between 6:00 and 8:00 PM at the Missoula Community Theater, which is at 200 North Adams Street in the meeting room. I believe that's on the second floor. And everybody's welcome. It will be an interactive forum to gather community priorities and discuss existing and future strategies to respond to houselessness in our area. There will be, join us to learn about Missoula's houseless response system, our current response system, and share your experiences and expertise and participate in a community-wide strategy development. There will be presentations starting every 30 minutes and local expertise will be in the room to help answer questions. There'll be activity stations to share your ideas and vote on best practices and strategies. You can come and go as this fits your schedule. So there's a two-hour block, presentations every 30 minutes. It's really meant to accommodate people's evening schedules. And if you have a chance to come down, we'd encourage you to do so. Then there'll be two focus groups this week. One is experiencing houselessness for the first time, titled Experiencing Houselessness for the First Time, Wednesday, April 3rd, from 3:30 to 4:30 at Revive Church, which is at 2811 Latimer Street. So if folks who are experiencing houselessness for the first time are interested in participating in this focus group, we'd highly encourage your participation. It's open to anyone who identifies as a person who currently or recently experiencing houselessness. And it does say there are 20 spots available for this focus group and all participants will be compensated with a $35 Visa gift card. So the 20 spots are first come, first served. And if you are interested in attending, we encourage you to email this email address, missoulastrategy, that's M I S S O U L A S T R A T E G Y at homebaseccc, that's spelled H O M E B A S E C C C dot org, to reserve your spot or arrive about 10 minutes early. And then additionally, there will be another focus group for unaccompanied houseless youth. And that's Thursday, April 4th, from 10:30 to 11:30 AM at the Current's Aquatic Center. That's located at 600 Craig Lane. This focus group is open to anyone who identifies as a person who is under 24 years old, who is or recently was living outside in a shelter or couch surfing and does not live with parents or other family members. That same email address can be used to reserve a spot. And also folks are encouraged to arrive 10 minutes early. Same thing there, $35 Visa gift card for those that participates. So I just wanted to make those public announcements. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to counselors for their comments. And I'll go ahead and start with folks in the room and start with President Sherrill.
I don't have any comments. I'm happy to be back. I was away for a bit and I'm just happy to be back in town.
Nice to have you back. Thank you. Counselor Nelson?
I'm going to pass tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nugent?
I'll pass tonight.
Okay. Counselor Jordan?
I'll pass. Thanks. Thank you. All right. Counselor Becerra, pass. Counselor Jones? Okay.
Pass. Counselor Jones? Okay. Counselor Forrest?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, in light of some of the comments that we heard tonight, that the Clark Fork Coalition is doing their annual river cleanup, and it's April 21 from 9:30 to 1 o'clock, and you meet at Caris Park, and they also provide a free lunch, barbecue lunch, so hopefully Mr. Matier is still online, and that can solve some of his concerns with finding a way to dispose of trash. If you can't make that, they also provide, you can sign up through their website, they'll provide bags and gloves for you, and you can also do a cleanup on your own. So again, it's April 21.
Thank you, Counselor Forrest. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam...
Not Forrest, Farmer. What was I thinking? Sorry. F, I don't know what I was thinking.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. And Counselor Carlino? Okay, great. How about for councilors that are online? See anybody? Not seeing any folks online.
I'll pass.
Okay, great. Then that, go ahead, and we will then, I'm just looking at the agenda, then we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 7:33 p.m. Thanks for attending, everybody, tonight.